Good evening and welcome to the March 8th meeting of the Chapcoa Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since 6:30 discussing matters of employment history, a particular person's potential litigation, matters confidential by FERPA and to receive advice and counsel from our attorney. Do I have a motion to bring us back into public session at 7:43 PM? All in favor? Aye. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we were teased a couple, couple days ago with warm weather and now it's cold again. But as you can tell, I'm on Jane. Jane could not be here this evening. So I'm here. Anyway, last week, the board was able, for the president's report, last week, board was able to participate in the district strategic planning session. We've all been working hard on various subcommittees and I believe we're coming close to setting a new level of direction on what the district should be taking and focusing on for the next five years with all the help from our consultant and Christine and the administration and building principles and community members. So we've got a lot. The strategic plan's been great, meetings. I want to acknowledge and wish all that celebrate holy today, Howley, and it's known as the Festival of Colors, the Festival of Spring, Festival of Love. It's one of the most popular and significant festivals in Hinduism. It celebrates the eternal, the eternal and divine love of God, of Rada and Krishna. And the day signifies a triumph of good over evil, which is something I think we all hope for, right? We're all looking for good over evil. Today's also International Women's Day, so I'd like to recognize Kaylee, Hillary to my left and Christine and Jamie to my right. And all the other people, women in the audience today and who might be watching on television. So happy International Women's Day. Yesterday, we had members of the concert band and street orchestra have the opportunity to perform in Albany. It's the NISMIA and it's Music Schools of the Month for March. So congratulations to them. Finally, I'd like to congratulate the Horace Greeley Boys Swim and Dive Team. Our Greeley team has, for the second year in a row, won the New York State title. What a great accomplishment by our swim and dive team, which I believe is the first time in our school history that we've had back-to-back state titles in the same sport. They continue to build upon the legacy of swimming at Greeley and have set their own place in athletic history in our district. As Jane mentioned last, and Jane and I mentioned last week, neither of us will be running again this year for seat on the school board. The PTA will be holding a candidate information evening on Monday, March 13th at 7:00 PM. I encourage anyone who's interested in running for the school board to attend. You can contact the PTA for additional information or Lisa Elsner, our district clerk, can provide you with additional information like requirements of being on the board and a signature petition. I would also encourage you to reach out to any school board member who would give you their own unique perspective. Thank you very much, Christine.
Thank you, Warren, and thank you for the acknowledgement. We're going to begin with the community update. So if you could pull that up, David, I would appreciate it and then we'll move into the budget presentation. Alright, so I too want to extend my congratulations to our boys' swimming and diving team. We're going to be honoring them at the March 22nd Board of Education meeting. So I want to just take an opportunity to also extend my congratulations to our swimmers, our divers, and of course, our coaches and the entire athletic program. And we look forward to inviting our students and our families to that meeting to honor them appropriately. So I have a few updates that I'd like to share. So on the agenda tonight, the board has gone through the process of selecting an architect and a construction manager for our capital projects. And we are moving forward with Empire as our construction manager there currently our general contractor. So we have a nice relationship with them already. So their contract is on the agenda for your consideration. And then we are going to move forward also with K, G, and D as our primary architect to facilitate the capital project over the next few years for the district. On the agenda tonight is our second reading of the graduation policy. We can discuss this more when we get to that portion of the agenda. I just want to mention, based on our last discussion, we did adjust this policy at our policy committee and articulated, based on your feedback, that a committee of Horace Greeley High School staff chaired by the principal will select an additional student speaker and/or student presenter rather than leave that as a discretionary item within the policy. And so we look forward to hearing the full board's feedback and the community's feedback. And this is not up for adoption tonight because we felt like it warranted a third reading since it's a significant shift in our current practice. Want to move my slide, David? Alright, so I do want to provide an update on our before and after school care for our community. So we've identified an organization that can support all of our before and after school childcare needs. And so I want to thank Jamie for partnering with me on moving forward and addressing that concern that was brought to our attention by our parents. So in the, in the process of trying to honor our commitment and our longstanding relationship with CCW, but also acknowledging that we need additional support to be able to move forward and provide care for our students. And so over the next month, I'll be working on and negotiating agreements. And I hope to have something ready for your approval by the first meeting in April. And so I look forward to trying to navigate this in a way that CCW can continue to be our partner, but we can also expand our offerings through this other opportunity that Jamie and I were able to identify for the district. So that's good news for the community and hopefully I can bring that process to conclusion very quickly. And so now we're going to move into our update on our DEI position based on work that's occurred outside of this meeting with members of our community and with Insight. And so I want to welcome Kia by Zoom to our presentation this, this evening. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Andrew Corcilia.
Thank you. This is at the culmination of several weeks of work where we've taken a really thorough look at the needs of our students and our staff and our families in support of all of our DEI efforts to be at a place where we would be able to recommend some staffing to support those needs. And so that included review of insight, education groups, equity audit, look at our student sense of belonging surveys, data from the thought exchange from a series of focus groups I did with students, teachers, with parents, with administrators, and brought together at the CARES meeting and what we're really hearing very strongly, I think, coalescing with some really strong themes, which is really focused on access to professionals at the building level, at the student level, at the classroom level for our students and for our faculty, and then also connections with our families. They need a point person. They're really looking for that to help them navigate. And we also have been really hearing from the difference in the needs articulated by teachers at the elementary level versus the secondary level. They're not the same. And so we then brought all this back to the CARES committee to take a deep look at all this, come up with the recommendations. Kia Johnson from Insight Education Group, who is our, she's our project coach, has guided us through that. And she's joining us here tonight to take us through those recommendations.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I want to start with just sharing a little bit of background and context around what it is that we've been working on and towards over the course of the last, almost going on two years as we've engaged in this work. We've been talking a lot about this model of shared equity leadership. And this is an approach where there's intentionality around making sure that equity is in fact everyone's work so that all stakeholders are contributing to the work of supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion through a model that prioritizes first the individual journey toward critical consciousness. So really understanding how our own personal identity markers are impacting our practice and the ways in which we show up in the community. And then having a shared set of values, right? And so being really clear around those things that we value and how we can use those to really guide our work. And then finally, having a shared set of practices that really help us be intentional and streamlined around the work that we are doing and what we're executing on a daily basis in our individual respective roles. That's all done in the interest of, I really want to focus on this part at the top right around understanding and centering student need. And so I wanted to frame this because I want to make sure that we're clear around the, this concept that we are really talking about need and really thinking about students as our primary need and then understanding beyond our students, how do we position our broader stakeholder community to be able to work in service of making sure we can realize and bring to fruition the needs that exist around our students. And so that was really the work of CARES committee when we came together several weeks ago. We spent a few hours together. David, you can advance to the next slide. During our time together, our objectives were twofold. First, to be able to make sure that we were being data informed and so really using evidence to help understand what the current conditions are around diversity, equity, inclusion specifically related to stakeholder need. And so we really looked at various sets of data, as Andrew shared, to prioritize the needs within the community. And then we wanted to be able to use that need, those identified needs, to identify some actionable steps and recommendations to make sure that we can maximize impact and while continuously driving toward making sure that equity is everyone's work. We can't do this work in silos. And so our process, we started first with a process of grounding. So we really wanted to make sure that as a collective, we were grounding ourselves and centering that the needs of our students are utmost priority. And so we did a few things to do that. We started off with just some activation around, you know, the words that come to mind for us as a community of practitioners and stakeholders when we think about engaging in this process and we think about student need. We heard words like hopeful. We heard words like optimistic. We heard words like energized. And so I think it was really representative of how dedicated the community is to really making sure that we get this right. So that was a really great way to start. And then we watched a brief clip called How Are the Children? And that speaks to an African community that actually uses a greeting saying, how are the children? To really use that to determine how are we doing holistically as a community, as a village? And so we use that to reflect on the current state around children's needs, right? We had had some prior board interactions and meetings where students voiced their needs and where students voiced some experiences that they had. And we really wanted to make sure that those were front of mind and top of mind for us as we engaged in the discussion and the workaround, confronting and understanding and elevating and responding to those needs. And then we then transitioned into a data conversation protocol. And so we looked at data from sense of belonging surveys, the special education audit, the equity audit recommendations, the thought exchange, and the DEI focus groups. And we worked in small groups to really understand what does the data show us? What assets exist in the data, right? So where are those things that we can celebrate and those strengths that we can leverage? What are some of the challenges and outline needs that are not yet being responded to well enough? And then what are some of the recommendations that we can make around those needs that we're seeing? And as we made those recommendations, we did that in a relationship to thinking about the themes that were emerging. So we worked in small groups to really dig deeply into individual data sets. And then we engaged in a gallery walk so we could see where some of the commonalities and themes existed around what we were finding. And the needs were very, very consistent as we looked around the needs for students, for staff, and for our families and caregivers in Chapacua Central School District. And so I won't read everything verbatim on the slide, but you'll see students because those are again our priority and we're really centering student need. And some of the things that emerged as themes in all of those data sets were the need to have a trusted adult that is accessible to them and that is available to be able to provide them with some of the social, social and emotional support that really supports psychological, emotional, and physical safety in a school community. The need for that sense of belonging, they need voice and agency. So we need to be able to position them to be able to contribute to solutions and to be able to be a part of how we co-create this model of shared equity leadership. They need clear and transparent processes to report any incidents or experiences that make them feel unsafe or uncomfortable. And they need to be represented. So they have to have the opportunity to see themselves in their learning experiences, in their environments. And they need to be able to feel celebrated and honored and valued while doing so. When we looked at staff need, we saw a need and a desire too. I also want to really pinpoint on a desire. There are so many staff members across the district. And I can say this from my experience in partnering with the district and also what the data showed us that are hungry to continue to develop cultural competency. They want that support. They want to be, they want to get great at this so that they can meet students where they are and really meet those needs. We need to be able to diversify our educator workforce, both through our hiring practices and also the culture that we're creating across the district. They need to feel safe. They have to be able to take risks safely in their practice and also in professional learning sessions so that they can share vulnerably without fear of, you know, getting it wrong, right? And then they need access to DEI leadership, right? So they, in order to do that, they have to be able to have access to people that have an expertise in this area and that are working consistently to help them develop those competencies. And that all really falls under the umbrella of ongoing and mandatory training and support. I'll stress that mandatory piece, that's coming from staff. Staff want, they want accountability around this and they want to make sure that as a community and a collective, we're really being consistent around what our expectations are, around how we continue to hone our skills and grow and develop. Lastly, families and caregivers, we need to make sure that there is support and access for non-English speakers. There was a consistent theme around the data that that is a barrier for some of our families and caregivers to be able to engage and share their input and benefit from our experiences. Clear channels of two-way communication, the need to know who to go to. They need to know when they can go to them, how they can go to them. And they need to be able to both share their experiences and to be able to get the responses and answers to their questions. And then also the opportunity to understand a consistent and unified message around what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what the implications for their families are, right? They need to understand the work that we're doing and how it impacts their student and how it impacts their experience as a stakeholder in our school community. So those were the needs that we saw. Based on those needs, when we think about that model of really centering student need, the general recommendation that came out of the CARES committee was to identify two positions to be able to support professional learning and instructional support. There needs to be greater access for educators to be able to continue to develop those skills, as I said before. And that's going to be in the form of a secondary staff developer and an elementary staff developer. And then for there to be one position to serve as a BIPOC parent and faculty liaison and to also be intentional about providing space and opportunity for student advocacy and support in the form of a K through 12 guidance counselor. And so with this model, we're thinking about student needs, being able to intentionally develop the skills of teachers, meet them where they are in terms of not just the personal journey to critical consciousness, but really, really tackling the how piece. How do you do this in your classroom every day? What does this look like when you enter your seventh grade ELA class? What are you doing to be inclusive, to be accessible, and to create the environment that our students need and deserve? And then to also create that staff member that's dedicated to supporting our students when they have those experiences because it's inevitable as we continue to work toward creating the culture that we envision. They are going to be bomb-stung along the way and we need to make sure that students have access to someone who can support them and help them think through, talk through that. And also to make sure that our families have someone that they can consistently go to and that is accessible to them and that can provide them with the support and answers to their questions. One piece I just want to add before I turn it back over to Dr. Ackerman is we also recognize we elevated the need around diversifying the educator workforce. And that is a need that we are very, very aware of. And there's a lot of work being done. Insight is actually partnering with Andrew Corcilia and members of the Recruitment and Retention Committee to support that effort, right? And so the DEI position and the work around it and the staffing model are not mutually exclusive from being able to diversify our educator workforce. And so we are still working very intentionally on what it looks like to diversify both across leadership areas and throughout the educator community simultaneously, while also making sure that we prioritize student need and create an infrastructure right now that is able to deliberately respond intentionally to the acute student and teacher level needs that exist in the community.
Thank you, Kia. Did any of our Board of Education members want to share some feedback from your involvement in, in the process around the work that we did to arrive at this moment where this is the recommendation moving forward? I just wanted to provide an op- okay, so I would, I'd like to share. So thank you. So thank you, Kia, for presenting our work collectively with Insight to evolve our equity support as we move into a new school year. I think it's very clear we're in a different place today where we were initially when we started. And we're adding more support for our faculty and for our students and our parents. It's just going to look different. It's going to be centered on providing support within our, the framework of our, our teaching staff. And the administrative team at the high school will support that work in, in our middle school and our elementary school buildings through an equity lens, which is all of our responsibility. I think that we heard very clearly from the faculty who have the greatest impact on our students since they're with them each day in the classroom, that they needed more instructional support and professional development. And our professional development model is, we, we find is the best way to accomplish that, that task. But we also heard that our, our kids need and their parents need to interact with and receive support from people who look like them. And so we felt it was really important that we continue to work with that model where we have someone with that level of expertise working directly in the district office with Andrew Corcilia to support our families and our students and our faculty in that way. And so this, this is our initial budget presentation. And so we're in the process where we are preparing to present the final budget to the board at the end of March. So I would welcome any feedback from the community around our proposed structure moving forward. Our budget tonight does include this structure because we are adding a position. So I have included that in, in this budget model. But again, there is time to give your feedback to us and to the board before we present the final budget for adoption at the end of, the end of March. Andrew, did you want to add any additional comments?
No, but I, I mean, other than just saying that, I think the process is very thorough. I think the feedback was very clear throughout and very consistent. And I think that this model of placing staff members actually within the classrooms, within the school, prioritizing that is actually directly addressing all of these that we've seen from our students and our teachers. And then also having a position that's really focused on social, emotional health and counseling. And then both for families and for students speaks to the needs that we've heard from our families. So I do think it's a step in the right direction. It's a model that responds directly to what we've heard.
Before I thank Kia and she heads out for the evening, does the board have any questions for Kia? Alright, and so I know that Kia, you had the opportunity to meet with the board in a work session to kind of talk through this. So I'd like to thank the board for being a part of that process as well. And so at this point, we'll, in the, in the process, we'll accept additional comments from our community, whether in writing or through public comment before we present, before I present the final budget to the board for their consideration. But this is the model that we have supported and what I'll be presenting tonight. Okay? Alright, thank you, Kia.
Thank you so much.
And so that is the end of the superintendent's report. So Andrew, Lynn, and I are going to move right into the budget presentation. So tonight's budget presentation is for the Board of Education and the community. It's not an opportunity for the community to interact with the administration or the board regarding the budget. But there are many moments where the community can provide feedback to us directly so we can embed your thinking into how we're moving forward. We also have opportunities for there to be a Q and A with the administration sponsored by the PTA, which I'll articulate towards the end of the budget presentation. But this is the first initial opportunity for the board and the community to learn about what the budget for '23, '24 could potentially look like, what we're thinking about. And then there's subsequent meetings over the next three weeks as we prepare the final budget for the Board of Education. And so just right out of the, right at the start here, we are proposing a 3.2%, 3% increase on the budget. It's about a $4 million increase to the overall operating budget and it is within the tax cap for our district. And so just to remind the community, we begin the budget planning process in the fall all the way through January when we start to talk with the board about what we're thinking about and what's important to the administrators. And the board starts to share with us what's important to them as we move forward in the, in the budget process. And principals begin to submit their budget requests for consideration to the business office as well as other large departments like technology and athletics. On the first, we are able to determine what our tax levy limit is and that begins to drive our, and finalize our process. And then we have two work sessions where we'll talk more specifically about our, our component budgets. So this is a general overview of the entire budget. On the 29th, we'll have a budget presentation prepared for the board for your consideration for adoption. On the 3rd of May, we have a public hearing, which is required by regulation. And then our budget vote on our proposed budget, the library's budget, and on our school board members will take place on May 16th, 2023, here at the high school. And so the Board, the Board of Education strategic questions really drive our budget process. The first is grounded in financial responsibility. The second is making sure that our, our academic program continues to grow and thrive. And the third is to be sure that we are addressing the social, emotional, learning needs of our students. And we, we are committed, there are certain commitments we make every year in the, in the budget development process. The first is making sure our students are at the center of every decision. The second is preserving and expanding our academic and social, emotional programs. The, the third is to monitor and continue to revisit our class sizes. And I'll talk more about that in specificity as we move through the presentation. The fourth is addressing our infrastructure needs. The fifth is being mindful that we have a lot of residents here who don't pay taxes and who also think their taxes are too high. So we think about that as we're preparing our budget. And we know that we're in the process of developing our new strategic plan. So we have to have enough flexibility within this budget to plan around what the target areas are for us moving forward. And so the major pockets of resource allocation are, are towards the, and the instructional and extracurricular programs, sectioning regarding our, to make sure that our class sizes are aligned with the CCT contract, are building infrastructure, and then meeting all of our contractual obligations with our teachers, our custodians, our secretaries, and our administrators. And so we have certain operating standards that we are making sure that we also adhere to as we move forward. We want to make sure that our enrollment levels support individualized learning, making sure that our programs align with the strategic initiatives, making sure our spaces reflect the 21st century, building schedules to maximize the use of all of our professional staff across the district, maintaining the integrity of our buildings, having a robust extracurricular program, having a wide range of professional learning opportunities for our staff, making sure we're meeting our contractual obligations, improving and addressing areas identified in our external and internal audits, responding to our needs identified by our administrative team, faculty, and staff, and supporting cutting-edge technology in our classrooms and offices. And so now I'm going to move it over to Andrew, who's going to talk about what we know at this point and then what remaining items are still outstanding in terms of budget development. So go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. So one of the first things we looked at is projected enrollments. We'll talk more about that in a few slides, so I won't spend much time on it here. We also are required to contribute to pensions for our staff, both the certified staff and the non-certified staff. So our TRS and ERS rates have been finalized at the state level. So we, we know how we can budget around those for the pensionable salaries that are included in this budget. The TRS rate is at 9.76% for next year and then the ERS rate is 13.1%. And those percentages get applied to the pensionable wages to our staff and they're paid to the state and the retirement systems in the following school year. Health insurance is another big cost driver of our budget. Our premium increases for the following year is going to be about 5.5% increase. Now, those expenses are also offset by employee contributions and retiree contributions as well. So that's a large driver though of our budget in the coming year, making it, making about $14.7 million of our budget puzzle. We know our contractual obligations for all of our bargaining units at this point, so we've projected based on those. And we have a, included in the budget, a debt service line, which as we talked about during the budget, will be declining next year and we are increasing our transfer to capital to smooth out that tax levy impact while we wait for the debt, for the new bond that just passed recently to come on board. So we'll talk more about that in a few minutes as well. The next few items are really about the tax cap. So the assessment growth factor or the measure that the state provides us with for property development in the town in recent years, it's based on assessments, information that's provided to the state by the towns, has been published at 0.7%. And then CPI, as we all know, inflation is well over two percent. But the two percent is the cap that we can take into consideration for our tax cap calculation. So we will be using that number for our, our tax cap. The calculation as it stands at the moment, and I'll go into it in detail in a second, is about two point one one percent increase year over year or two point four six seven million in terms of our increase in our tax levy. And a reminder that tax cap is simply a threshold that we measure ourselves against to determine whether or not a simple majority or a super majority would be required to pass our budget next year. Then the last item here is just about, it's about the tax rate. Now, we don't control the tax rate, we control the tax levy or the board and the voters do. But the tax rate is a function of, of that. And one of the components that we know about right now are the equalization rates from the state. And that is when we take our two towns with two different assessing values and apply an equalization rate to turn those assessments into a full value. So we can spread the taxes amongst our two towns before determining the tax rate. So those rates are out. I, I highlight them especially this year because there is a significant change in the Newcastle rate in particular, which will shift that full value calculation, pulling some of the full value of our property towards the Newcastle side, which will, will bring the Mount Pleasant tax rate down versus the, the new Newcastle tax rate. And that is separate and apart from the assessed value changes that will happen between now and, and the, the date when we set the levy. So on the next slide, I'm going to go through some of our unknown items at the moment. So, so we have a governor's proposal on state aid and we'll, we'll factor those projections as well as any adjustments that we know about into the budget discussion. At the moment, we're reflecting an eight point four percent increase in state aid or about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The biggest driver of that at the moment is building aid. As we closed out some of our capital projects from the last bond and other projects that we've done over the last few years. Those projects are now driving state aid in our budget projections for next year. We also saw an, saw an increase of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in foundation aid and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in BOSI's aid, based on the current projections we have from the state. That'll get finalized over the next several weeks and hopefully we'll have before we adopt a budget, a final legislative proposal for the budget. And we will hopefully know with more certainty before we finalize this process, what our state aid projection should be for the new year. Transportation costs are still somewhat unknown. CPI inflation is a factor in what we can renew our contract with our transportation provider on. That'll happen in a few, a few more months, actually, be after the budget passes before we know that. So that's going to be a guess that we're going to be taking over the next several weeks. And we, we think our, our routes are fairly stable based on what we're currently operating and the enrollment projections we have. So really it's going to hinge very heavily on either our out of district transportation needs or the CPI. And we've made assumptions in the budget for both of those. Final tax assessed values with any tax or shared proceedings or other adjustments that will come. Inflation, as I've talked about several times, and then kindergarten enrollment. That is from an enrollment perspective, are, are single most unknown with enrollment. So we'll talk about that in a few slides. The next chart is a historical view of what our budgets have looked like in the last several years. As you can see, from the left to the right, is, is a steady increase in our budget and our tax levy. Last year, we had a budget increase of two point six nine percent and a levy increase of two point seven nine percent. This year, we're proposing a budget increase of three point two, three percent and a levy increase of two point one one. The difference in those two numbers is really driven by those non-property tax revenue items that are increasing year over year, which I'll go into in more detail in just a moment. So in terms of expenditures, a very high level summary of our expenditures here, broken up by categories that we wanted to show to help folks understand the budget in a little bit more detail. Certainly our staff salaries are the single largest piece of our budget. And that is going up about two point two percent. And that reflects all of the staffing changes that we'll talk about over the next several meetings, as well as the contractual increases for, for staff that are agreed upon already. Our benefits line, which includes our health benefits, our pension benefits, our life insurance, our dental vision, all of those types of benefits are reflected here. And that's about a three point six percent increase year over year. I spoke about debt service briefly before, those are fixed payments. We know what they are. Those are for our outstanding bonds, as well as our energy performance contracts from years before. It's a steady schedule. We know exactly what to budget for those and we have reflected those in the budget. I'll talk more about capital transfers in a moment, but they are definitely linked together. Operations and maintenance is increasing by about ten point four percent. This is really driven by inflation. Fuel costs, our supply costs, and some of our contracted services for repairs and, and maintenance contracts are, are really driving the need for us to, to increase this budget in the coming year. There are some small project expenses included in there as well, but, but really I can't emphasize enough the cost of fuel and the impact on the economy are certainly showing themselves in, in our operations and maintenance budget. Transportation is going up about four point three percent based on an assumed increase on the CPI, as I mentioned earlier, and our existing route projections. Special education has a modest decrease here as we shift students around between some of our out of district placements. We're seeing some adjustments there with some minor savings. We're able to form our IP mandated services with all of our staff, with our current resources, with some adjustments based on age and grade level changes. In terms of BOSI services, you'll see a larger increase than normal here for BOSI services. This will come with a, a, a really shift in the philosophy of how we're going to be procuring some of our technology services. And Josh Bach will talk more about that when he presents to the board. But you'll see an increase in, in BOSI's of about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for BOSI services related to technology. And there's a corresponding decrease, not exactly the same. However, those BOSI's additional services will translate into BOSI's aid the following school year. So it's an important kind of factor for consideration as we see that increase happening. Per pupil is really just a, a way of categorizing really our school level spending. We allocate dollars to our buildings based on the enrollment projections we have. It, it, it is also including this year, some areas of investment where we've seen with our newer spaces and the need either post pandemic or post construction of those new spaces to really supplement our science or technology areas with supplies, materials and equipment that really support the academic program that we're trying to roll out with these new spaces, as well as the new, new standards and instructional practices that we're implementing. So there'll be some increases in the per pupil spending there strictly around those particular areas that I mentioned. In terms of other, this is really a catchall for us. This is where our administrative central office, staff expenses are, Board of Education, legal services, insurance. Various continuing ed costs are in here as well. You'll see that is going up by about twelve point three percent year over year. A, a big driver that is continuing ed, we're seeing some, some return to our continuing ed program. That's really great interest driven by Fran Flamino and, and her great work. So we're, we're seeing some increases in there. And then I mentioned about capital transfers. So you'll see here the increase in capital transfer, which corresponds to that debt service decrease that I mentioned earlier. Next slide really just kind of gives you a, a view of how does the, the pile, the pie get divided up. So our, our current year twenty-two, twenty-three budget on the left-hand side and our proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four is on the right. And as you can see, salaries and benefits make up seventy-one percent or more of our budget, both last year and this year. Sorry, this year and next year. It's the biggest driver in our budget in total and all the other percentages are listed below that. I, I mentioned briefly the, the debt service capital transfer. So I was very articulate, or at least I tried to be very articulate during our bond conversations this past fall, that we anticipate a decrease in our debt service for this coming budget year. And in those meetings, I was very clear to say, to, to maintain the tax levy and avoid volatility in our tax levy and our tax rate. We would anticipate increasing our capital transfer line for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to kind of fill that void until that debt comes on. So what you're seeing in our budget this year is we are planning to invest some additional funds through the capital transfer, dealing with the underground utilities at Greeley, which as I'm sure the board knows, has been a problem for us the last several months and, and year. So we're going to invest in that, repairing some of the more aging areas that we anticipate we'll have future issues with. And we're also investing in some safety and security areas such as cameras and door hardware and gates, as well as some student bathroom improvements and office renovation work throughout the district. All through that two point two million dollars that we're going to have in that trap, capital transfer line this year. How are we paying for it all? Well, certainly the real property tax levy, which, which we mentioned earlier, will be going up by about two point one percent. We're at the cap. That would mean we, to pass the budget, we would need a simple majority. State aid is going up about eight point four percent. I mentioned the drivers of that a few moments ago. While not a revenue source, appropriated fund balance is a, a source of funds that we use to balance our budget. We're going to maintain the three point five million dollar appropriation of fund balance. However, we are looking carefully at our spending and our revenue projections to make sure that we do not continue to see our fund balance decline, which is a concern that, that, that we raised at the previous budget conversation. So we, right now, we, we believe we can sustain the three point five million and we will look to, to replenish that as the, the time goes on. Sales tax revenues is seeing growth. That's driven by two things really. It's inflation at the cost of, of what people are buying is going up. And, and we're seeing the, the real full rollout of the increase in sales tax in Westchester County that happened, I believe it was last school year. So we're really seeing some benefit there. So we're taking that into account for our projection. Charges for services, the significant driver there is continuing ed, as I mentioned earlier. We're seeing a lot of interest, a lot of folks are coming back to our schools, community members, as well as driver's education program is running. So we're showing an increase that in that line. That is a self-sustaining program. So the dollar amount that we're reflecting for revenue is also the dollar amount we're reflecting for expenses for that program. Use of money and property. This is where we see the increase in our interest earnings. So as the Fed has raised interest rates, right? Our deposits with our banks and our financial institutions have been growing, which is something we haven't seen in quite a long time. It's actually accelerating very quickly because of how low it had been for such, such a long time. So we, we're projecting that increase there. It's offset by some additional sale of property assets, things like that, that we saw as a one-time increase this year that we have not reflected in next year's budget because we don't have any good solid numbers yet. So that's why it's tampered down just a bit. And then miscellaneous income. This is where we are making one change to our budget, which is supporting our senior musical. We anticipate the senior musical cost will be in our budget this coming school year. And this is the revenue for the donation from the PTA that will offset that. There's about a fifty thousand dollar line item in our budget for that going forward. The next slide is really just similar to the expense. It's, it's how the, the revenue breaks down, down by percentage. With real property taxes certainly being the largest funding source for our budget. State aid being the second at about eight point two percent for next year. And then the rest of our revenue sources fall down at lower percentages. This is just for context for the Board of Education to understand where we are and where we've come from. So inflation certainly is still a concern. As you see on the left side of this chart, you know, back in two thousand, we were in the point six, one point one, you know, inflation range. That, that has risen when I sat here last year and spoke with you all. We were at about six point three percent in January of twenty twenty-two. We were in seven point six percent in June of twenty twenty-two. We saw some really high increases in our fuel costs, in our supplies cost. Inflation this past January is at six percent. So we're still at a fairly high inflation threshold. It is starting, it looks to be starting to come down, which would be helpful for us with our budgeting practices. But we're also seeing our interest rates increasing as the Fed tries to deal with that at the national level. So we see some, some benefit on the revenue side, but certainly our costs are, are much more concerning because of CPI. And then this chart is a chart you've seen before. It's just been updated with our latest twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fund balance projections. I, I share, just sharing with the board again, you know, that, that downward trend in overall fund balances is the concern. We want to just manage carefully as we go forward into the budget-making process. We are able to sustain the, the three and a half million dollars of fund balance that we will use for next year's budget. But we do want to start to find ways to replenish that over the near term. And now I will transition to the detailed slides of the property tax cap. So I'll reiterate again, the property tax cap is simply a measure by which we understand whether or not we need a simple majority or a super majority sixty percent voter approval on our budget proposal. We stay at or below the cap, it's a simple majority and that's what we're presenting. In a real summary level, I, I, I shared earlier that CPI is capped at two percent. Our tax-based growth factor or the development that we're seeing in our, in our assessed values in our town through new construction is about point zero, zero, seven. So then our capital exclusions, all right, five point nine million. Our capital exclusions include our debt service payments, our transfer capital projects, our BOSI's capital charges, which are a small portion. And then all of that is offset by building aid. The increase we're seeing in building aid is reducing the exclusion that we have for the tax cap. In other words, because the state is paying us that money, we do not have that exemption on the tax cap. So that's why our exemption is down on the capital line versus last year. The resulting calculation, however, is a tax levy limit of a hundred and nineteen million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, an increase of two point four six seven million or two point one one percent. And that cap is what we're using to project our tax levy for next year. There is no way that you will be able to see this, but when you look at this presentation after the meeting, you will be able to see this is the more detailed calculation of our tax cap, taking into consideration our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three tax levy as a starting point. We walk through the calculations, applying the tax-based growth factor, removing the exclusions from last year, adding CPI, adding our new exclusions and then resulting in the same two point four six seven million dollar increase that I mentioned a moment ago.
I'm going to transition over to enrollment projections and our sections. So this is, this is a really tough chart to read, but it'll be posted online. This is our enrollment projections all the way through to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. We just had a study done about three years ago, so this is as accurate as it could be for us. And so let me move into our class size district thresholds. And these are determined through contract with the CHAPCA Teachers Association. It, between our negotiated contract with the teachers and then it's ultimately approved by the Board of Education. So the thresholds for kindergarten is twenty students, first grade is twenty-three. Two through fourth grade is twenty-five and five through twelfth grade is twenty-eight. And so these are our projections for next year. So each grade level across the elementary school has four sections except for roaring Brook, Brook, grade four. That has, that is a five section. That's a five section grade level. We projected four sections for all kindergartens, but have three contingency positions built into this budget. Should enrollment drive us to increase the sections, we're just not going to start there yet because kindergarten registration is next week. So we felt like this would be the best way to move forward. At, at this point, we're, we have all classes under the threshold. And I feel like we're addressing some of the concerns that have been brought to our attention regarding class size. But again, the enrollment fluctuates all the way through until September. So while these are our projections right now, these could potentially change as we move through the school year and kids leave the district, kids enroll in the district. But there is enough built into this budget to address those needs and we have to continue to carefully watch kindergarten. These are our projections for the middle school. You'll notice that there is a difference in enrollment in Bell compared to Severn Bridges. We have about a hundred more students in Bell. So we had to make adjustments to fifth and sixth grade and we'll be working through what that means for our current instructional model there to make sure that the class sizes were closer to the class sizes in fifth and sixth grade at Seven Bridges. But these are the projections moving into the middle school for next year. And then these, high school's a little bit more difficult to project because there's some, so many nuances regarding their, the courses. But these are, this is our enrollment projection for ninth through twelfth grade. And this is what our average class size we anticipate will look like. But again, it all depends on the sections and how many kids are enrolling in a, in a given class. But this is our estimate, this is in our, our, our numbers right now currently. And so just to, to summarize, we are at this point recommending a three point two, three percent increase to our budget, which is within our cap for next year. And we've built a budget and we'll be presenting a budget in the next few weeks that articulates an increase at this level. And we feel like we're responding to your strategic And we feel like we're responding to your strategic questions. We're meeting our operating standards. We're supporting our physical, social, emotional safety throughout the district. We're maintaining our robust professional learning program. We're adjusting our personnel based on enrollment and our needs. We're presenting a budget below the tax cap to make sure that it's fiscally sustainable and it adheres to our class size contractual requirements. And so at this point, if we could take any questions from the Board of Education or anything that you want to make sure that as we move forward and present the components of the budget we address, we'd welcome that feedback now.
Sorry, I guess, Andrew, this is really a, can you clarify, not that you didn't already say it? I think that unless you are up here or otherwise very involved in budgeting in another arena, it is very confusing sometimes to hear the difference between the budget increase and the levy increase. And we're looking at a 3.23% budget increase, but a 2.11 levy increase. And can you, just assuming that there are community members watching this who maybe needed as much time to understand this as I did, which was more than a minute? Can you maybe just, in flainer English, explain what the difference is between those two things?
Yes, so the proposed budget has a gross dollar increase of about $4.3 million, right? The proportion of that increase that's funded by the tax levy is the resulting 2.467, right? And that is at the tax cap. The difference between those two numbers is funded through increases in state aid, increases in interest earnings, increases in fees for continuing education, all those other revenue items. So while the budget is growing at a larger amount, the tax levy is at that 2.11% level.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the community, the tax cap refers to the levy increase, not the budgeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
A similar question, again, for folks who, for whom this might be the first time they're paying attention to this. I'm sure there are community members who aren't clear on how the annual budgeting is distinct from the bond that was passed in the fall. And you talked about how we're doing some capital transfer moves to, you know, make some changes there that sound like it could be something that's opportunistic, given the fact that we passed the bond. But I think it would help community members, again, to understand what the relationship is between what was passed in the fall and what this budget is about. And if there are things that we got, where did we get some flexibility? Because of the bond passed, where do we have new opportunities? How are we taking advantage of the fact that the bond passed?
So it's important to also think back to what was an input to the bond conversation, which is the building condition survey, right? And that building condition survey was done about a year ago, a little over a year ago. And there was more needs than we could afford to place in the bond. So that's why, when I was presenting as part of the bond conversations, not only did I mention this coming year's $2.2 million capital transfer, which I knew we'd need to continue to invest in facilities improvements, but in the out years, you know, I projected we would continue to be funding capital improvement projects through this transfer to capital because of the fact that, A, we couldn't accomplish everything we needed in the bond, and we knew that going into it. And every day that this building and this campus and every other building in the district is used, they age and there will continue to be this need to do repairs of a larger scale, which is what that capital transfer line is really meant to do. Joe Grumondo and the Facilities Department have, you know, done a great job of maintaining things, breaking, fixing broken things. That's in the operating budget. So that's where you're seeing our supplies costs and our contract vendors for some of our more kind of routine repair work included there. Did I clarify everything for you there, Ryan?
I think that's a good start. I think people will probably also be curious to understand the fund balance piece too. And like, okay, what do we have a target for the fund balance that we want to get back to? Is it more like it was a few years ago? And is it COVID that was really a driver that brought that fund balance down? Or there are other, you talked about inflation and other things, but people will want to be able to process that too and understand like, okay, well, does the fact that we got the bond passed give us a better chance of being able to get a fund balance back to a healthier spot or not? Maybe these things don't have a relationship.
I would say they're independent conversations, right? So you asked about a target. We don't have a formal target, right? But from a legal perspective, we are capped at our unassigned, undesigned fund balance to be 4% of next year's budget. You know, our projection, I believe, is in the 2.3, 2.6 range at the moment for the end of this year, right? So we're at half of what we're basically allowed to be at for that portion. We also have reserves in place to help deal with real, you know, large expenses, tax surcharges, retirement contributions, bikes, those types of things. You know? So we're healthy at the moment, but we want to stay healthy, okay? From a financing perspective, tying it into the bond, rating agencies don't care that you're capped at 4%. If you are 10%, they'd love it, right? Because they want to show that you have the financial strength and fortitude to weather economic downturns or catastrophic events. And the more fund balance you have, the better your credit rating will be, right? So there's that delicate balance of, you know, we're capped, we're trying to be efficient in what we ask our taxpayers for. You know, it's a delicate kind of ballet that we're trying to put on to make sure that we balance all the competing priorities that we're asked to operate under.
And then one last one for the future. I would be curious to hear in subsequent sessions, what was on the wish list for this budget that didn't make it in? So people could, so I could assess just sort of some of the stuff we did try to add and where we ran up against limits. So maybe that's something we could take up in the future conversation.
Sure.
I have a lot of questions, but I'll wait till after the other presentations are made by the rest of the administration. But I do have one, sort of backs up to what Ryan was asking. We spent quite a bit of money on COVID materials, which we had to because we were like, one of the only schools that stayed open, which was great. Is there any way we can recoup any of those expenses? Are there any?
We're actually actively, at the moment, my office is, we've reopened the file. And with some new guidance from FEMA, we're actually trying to claim some additional FEMA funding for expenses that we had basically written off and said, we spent the money and we're done. It's not the most friendly bureaucratic process. So we're working through that diligently, but we think we'll be able to recoup some additional money for perhaps overtime spending, perhaps some PPE, things that we didn't already get funding for. So if that money comes through, that's a fund balance item, right? That'll be unexpected revenue that we're not forecasting that we would.
Are there any physical items that we can sell or that we've?
That is a great question that I haven't pondered. So I think we could go back and look at that and see if there's a market for, you know, temperature reading devices, for example, you know, that might be.
I don't know about that, but I mean, we spent quite a bit of money. Maybe we can do something with it or, I don't know, you know?
It is unfortunate that the federal government didn't provide funding for us like they did all other school districts, except for one other one in the entire state. And so even with our advocacy, it just, it didn't, it didn't impact any kind of decision making at that level.
Okay, so. Thank you, Andrew.
Anything else? Okay, and so just in terms of the calendar, next week we'll have our Curriculum Technology, Special Education and Athletics Budget Presentation for the Board and the community. And then I just want to remind, because this is a presentation for the board, but of course, the community will have questions on the budget and they have every right to have those conversations with us. So there will be an opportunity on March 28th to interact with the administrative team. Sponsored by the PTA, we'll have a budget forum. But also, you know, you can certainly reach out to the Board of Education or to Andrew or to me. And we can answer your questions and go over the budget. Andrew will schedule appointments with community members that would like to come in and talk about what we've presented. And so you're certainly welcome to do that at any point in the process. And so that's the end of our first budget presentation. We'll have this online tomorrow for our families to view as well. So thank you, thank you, Andrew and Kathy, who's in the audience today for working with us to prepare the budget for the board's consideration. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Any committee reports to be discussed?
There was a policy committee meeting. We did take up two policy items that are going to be addressed later in the agenda. So I think we can probably just wait for that.
Okay. Hillary?
I'm not a committee per se, but I'm the advocacy liaison. So I wanted to report that right before the winter break, the February break, West Putt organized some Zoom advocacy check ins with local elected officials. The scheduling was a little bit weird, but I was able to go to the one with Chris Burdeck, our assembly member, or one of the assembly members representing our district. And we had, there were a number of school districts on the call and he is incredibly responsive, I have to say. And wanted to know what issues were relevant to the school district. And I wanted to update specifically on one, which was the move to zero emission, zero emission school buses, which I know is something that we've discussed substantially within the district. And I wanted to give an update that we spoke with him and said, this is something that the district is absolutely committed to in alignment with the, you know, the state mandates, but that we need some more help. We were not alone in saying to him that we need not only guidance from the state in terms of what is going to be provided in terms of assistance for the districts, that we'd like some financial assistance with this for both the districts like ours who contract out for transportation services and districts who own their own busing. This is a huge financial undertaking, as there's been some discussion, the buses are a lot more expensive. There are, we are not the only district that's looking at space considerations for how we're physically going to do this. And mentioned sort of some of the issues that the town and other entities have had with Con Ed actually bringing electric chargers online, even when the intention is there to have them. So we brought all that to his attention and just sort of said, you know, we're committed to this as a district, but we need more help in myriad ways from the state. So hopefully that will be forthcoming, or at least there will be forthcoming some more information on exactly how to proceed to comply. Along with that, we talked about safety, school safety concerns, and hopefully looking for more state financial assistance for that. And likewise for student mental health and a number of other issues, but those were the big ones and ones that I know we've been discussing. So I'll keep going to those meetings and updating everyone.
Thank you. Great. Now we're going to have public comment. We welcome public comments and respect for each other's time. We ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment, please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Barrett Flom. I have a child that's in kindergarten and I just want to thank you, Dr. Ackerman, for the update regarding the before school and after school care new organization that you're contracting with as a member of the Chappaqua Elementary Childcare Initiative. We are very appreciative of the district and the work that you guys have done responding to this need that's very great in our district. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lin Lee. I really appreciate the time and effort you put for our community. I'm here today to advocate for the introduction of an advanced placement Chinese class in our high school. By offering AP Chinese class, we can provide our students with opportunity to gain proficiency in this language and prepare them for the future careers. Additionally, students who successfully pass AP exam can earn college credits, potentially saving time and money in their college. And as we all know, that our school district offers four languages, a second language, Spanish, Latin, French and Chinese. Of all the four second languages, AP Chinese class is the only subject that without an AP level class. So that means it is not a complete track for Chinese learners. So, and also it's not fair for students who spend several years to learn Chinese and want to complete AP level as an accomplishment. So now we have, actually, we have the teachers available in high school to teach AP and we have the need. So I believe that our school district has the responsibility to provide our students with a well-rounded education and prepare them for the success in this community, in this global community. So adding a Chinese, AP Chinese class is a step in the right direction. And so I encourage the school district to consider this proposal and take necessary steps to introduce AP Chinese class in our school district. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Steve Kotler and I still have a child here as a senior at Greeley High School. I want to say that that first presentation about DEI, to me, was a bunch of educational mumbo jumbo. You've gone a half a year without a directive DEI. You're now talking about increasing your budget for DEI. I don't understand when this woman Kia was talking about diversity in your staff. Does anybody know what the demographics are of our students in this district in terms of their racial ethnic breakdown? They'll require more diversity as opposed to merit to hire people. This is an attempt to teach our kids by the school district, what the school district believes is social justice. And I resent that. The parents take care of their kids. The parents are the ones who teach their kids right from wrong. I don't need the district telling me or my kids what social justice is all about. And you're talking about advocacy. Where was the advocacy for children, including my son, in the spring of last year, who was bullied and interrogated by members of the administrative staff after a picture appeared in an edition of the Chappaqua magazine after a football game, after a football season, when everybody knew? And then after that incident of all six kids who did nothing inappropriate, and I went into have a meeting with Dr. Ackerman and others. And then when I asked a question.
Excuse me, we don't talk about individual people in our comments, so.
You know what? I'm making the comments, not you.
No, you're not. Okay. Excuse me, we don't, we try to be respectful for.
Yeah, be respectful. Be respectful of the students. Care about the students. All you care about is a check off of a social agenda. You don't care about the students. What are you going to do about the eighth grade students next year who you're going to force to take algebra and biology? And you write that email that says, well, if there aren't at least 10 kids who want to take the regular science or math course in eighth grade, they're out of luck. Where's the justice for that? You have to wake up to who really matters here. It's not you, it's the kids and it's the parents behind that kids, those kids.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Moreno. I wanted to thank you, Dr. Ackerman and the board for the presentation. It was very helpful. I really wanted to note that I was very happy to see the reduction in class sizes, particularly in the elementary schools. There have been a lot of concerns among parents that I know that the class sizes had gotten too large. So it was really great to see that. The other thing I was hoping maybe you would consider, if you haven't already, and maybe it's just detailed in a later presentation, is adding additional academic intervention support, particularly for math students at the elementary school level. We have that support in the schools for reading, but it doesn't exist during the school day for math. I think it's really important and it could really help many of our kids, especially who have struggled after the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board?
So I, may I, my, okay, so um I know we're in conversation at the high school about offering AP Mandarin. And we're actually talking in strategic planning about um revamping our entire foreign language program. So I would encourage you to reach out to um, is Siska? Okay, reach out to Dr. Gamma to see where they are in that process, but if you send me an email, I can facilitate that for you as well, because we know that it's a priority for um many of our students and our parents. So um, we are in the process of talking about whether or not that can be a reality next year, but I also want to let you know we're looking at our entire foreign language program um with the Strategic Planning Committee and potentially expanding that down to the elementary level. Um, and I also would like to share, we continue to talk about how to support AIS math uh within the context of the school day. We know that uh we're offering that before school and it's um prohibited for for some of our students. Um, so we are discussing that as a potential option moving into next year. We just haven't finalized that process yet because we're waiting on a a a few more factors to come to fruition before we figure out how to to move forward based on some shifting of staff and some decisions that we're waiting on. But that is something that uh we continue to talk about, and we'll be addressing that in the next uh few days. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to approvals and ratifications. Um, may I have a motion for item three point one? Uh, minutes from February eighth meeting. I have a motion by Kaylee, may I have a second? Hillary, second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Okay, um, may I have a motion for policy for item three point two, policy four zero zero five, elementary, secondary curriculum development, second reading and adoption. Ryan moves. Hillary, second. Discussion.
So this policy is really designed to reflect what's currently in practice. And so um we did receive some feedback from the CCT that they would like us to consider um moving forward with some type of curriculum council that doesn't need to be included within the policy. And we have a lot of different committees right now that support this work. Um, Adam actually has a professional development council uh made up of teachers that help advise us moving forward, but we'll continue to talk with the CCT if it makes sense to uh make some adjustments internally to reflect uh some of that need that they brought to the policy committee's attention. Um, but for the purposes of what we're trying to do today, it's it's to have a policy that reflects our current reality and what's been in place for the past twenty years. So that that that's what we're trying to accomplish in this moment. Um, but there could be a potential to revise this in the future based on on continued conversations with the teachers union.
Okay. Um, any other questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Item three point three, policies four, seven, zero, and zero, graduation, second reading.
Right, so this policy, we had some um discussion at the last meeting. We all agree we must address um the graduation ceremony because uh before I arrived, they made some adjustments to the grading system at Greeley, which resulted in multiple valedictorians. And past practice has been the valedictorian has been able to speak at graduation. This year we have eighteen. So we need to, um, we, so what we decided to do rather than at this point, like, look at that process is um, our first step is let's address the program without addressing the valedictorian status of students because we feel like that's a very large conversation that involves a lot of stakeholders. And so, um we all agreed at the last meeting of who the speaker should be at graduation, but we had a line in there that would allow uh the Greeley administration and staff to determine an additional student speaker if they chose to. Um, but we talked about that. We felt like that was important that they did that um each year. And so uh the new language, and this is only a second read because we felt like we need to share with the board, get your feedback, share with the community, get your feedback, and then move to a third read and potential adoption. Um, the new language just simply says that a committee of course Greeley High School staff chaired by the principal will select an additional student speaker and or student presenter for the graduation ceremony. We wrote it that way because, you know, they may decide it's a speaker, they may decide it's a poet, they may decide it's a singer. And we wanted to give that latitude, but we did want, we did feel like it was important that the number of adult speakers equaled the number of student speakers for graduation. And so I don't know, uh Hillary, did I sum it up right? Got, did I get everything?
Yeah, I just want to be clear because you mentioned this year's eighteen valedictorians, that this is not a change for this year. We are going to hear from all eighteen of them in June, um, that this is a proposed change for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year moving forward.
So if the if the board has any additional feedback, if they could share that with us, because if there's no additional feedback from the board and there's no additional feedback from the community, then I'll put this on the agenda next week for your consideration.
I think it makes, I think it's 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 a improvement to the policy. I mean, I know other high schools, colleges allow they don't have a valedictorian speak. They have maybe a a contest for a speaker, a public speaking contest, or like you said, they'll have a poet or somebody play music or 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 sing or something like that. So it gets more people involved in the ceremony, but a broader range of people, so.
Right, well, if if there's any additional feedback, if you could share that with uh Hillary, Ryan, and I before next Wednesday, so we'll know whether or not we need to meet or I need to put it on simply for a third reading. Um, we we would appreciate it, and um I want to thank Sandy and Andrew for being part of this conversation to help us craft something that we feel um would be helpful for everybody moving forward. So, thank you.
So Lisa, do we have to table this, or is it? We're good, okay. Just want to make sure. Um, item four point one instructional, please.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item four point one. Do I have a second? Kaylee? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I re- recommend four point two non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item four point two. Do I have a second? Hillary? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Recommend actions, uh, item five. So we're going to take item five point one through item five point one eight inclusive. So we use the consent agenda uh which permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters that are included. Any board member who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may do so, indicate that item be considered and voted on separately. This is preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended that the Board of Education following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. Do I have a motion for items five point one through five point one eight? Or would anyone like to take anything off the consent agenda? Hillary moves. May I have a second? Kaylee has a second. Any discussion on any of the items? All in favor? Aye.
I just want to um thank Jim Skug and Laurel Lynn Stewart, Andrew Priscilla and Andrew Letton. Um, you'll see that tonight, the Board of Education acted on our successor agreement to the administrative contract. So um, I want to thank their participation in the process to come to resolution on their contractual, their outstanding contract. Um, so that we could budget appropriately. So thank you to Jim and to Lynn, and to the negotiation team on the administrative side.
Okay, um, I'd like to take item six altogether. Item six point one through six point five. We're acknowledging and agreeing with Swanville Club for March usage. Uh, the Grand Prix New York Racing um on March first, agreement services with Lawrence Steinberg for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Agreement of services with Divya Pa- Pathik for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and agreement services with Ming Kuan Wu for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion to acknowledge these? Ryan, second. Hillary? Any discussion, just acknowledgement? All in favor? Aye. Um, facilities? We have no real updates today. Andrew? Financials, um, we can take eight point one through eight point four together. They are um receipt of the treasurer's report for January twenty twenty-three, receipt of the appropriation status report for January twenty twenty-three, repeat receipt of the revenue status report for twenty twenty-three, and receipt of the claims order report for February twenty twenty-three. Um, I have a motion for items eight point one through eight point four. Kaylee? May I have a second? Ryan seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Brings us to notice of future meetings. Um, our next meeting will be Wednesday, March fifteenth at seven thirty PM, where we'll be discussing curriculum, technology, special education, and the athletic budget presentations at right here at the Horst Greeley High School Auditorium. The meeting after that is Wednesday, March twenty-second at seven thirty PM, where we'll be discussing operations and maintenance, non-instructional revenue and tax rates, and contingency budget presentations, again, here at the Horst Greeley Auditorium. Lisa? Okay, so on Wednesday, fifteenth, we'll be in the academic commons. So let me so March fifteenth will be in the academic commons, and March twenty-second, we'll be back here. Both in the commons. Okay, so the next two meetings will be in the commons. Thank you, Lisa. Otherwise, we'll have people showing up here. Um, thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine oh four PM? Hillary, second. Ryan, seconds. All in favor?